Okay, new business, I'll accept the motion to approve its settlement and release of case number 2012 L66052 Clayton versus Village of Saw Village for the total amount of forty-five thousand dollars. Each occurrence is outlined below. Item number one, eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and eleven cents. You don't have that on hand? I'm sorry, eleven, okay, I can't read. Eleven thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and eleven cents. Item number two, nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. Item number three, nine, nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. And item number four, fourteen dollars, two hundred and ten dollars and fifty-three cents. It all includes fees before talk. I'll accept the motion. Move by trustee, five second, second by trustee, Brandon, any questions? Matter of question, follow through.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Brandon?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee.
Motion is carried.
All the comments or all questions, comments will be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on the special meeting and just items only. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to sit for three minutes and then may I engage with the debate. And I will listen to all comments and before I respond, please state your name.
Debbie Williams. Are we going to find out what this lawsuit is about at any point? And is it going to be available for public record? That's all I need to know.
Yes, the lawsuit will be available for public record.
Excuse me, but it didn't happen. My question is really the same thing, on thing. I would like to know if you could give us any information like you do now regarding what this is about.
As I always say, at the end of all questions, I will comment on what I want.
But I don't like that. I'm sorry, but I would look back to everybody to get through it, and then I got to handle my question. That's not fair. I mean, how you guys decide to do that?
For the same reason you're doing that.
But you don't want to go to...
No, for the same reason you're doing that, going back to before.
How do you want to answer me?
I will answer, as I said before, I will answer at the end. After all, everybody asked a question, that's why I write it down. So I don't forget. Okay, um, as was stated a few minutes ago, the lawsuits, once they're ratified, it will be copies, will be made public. Um, as far as this is a lawsuit that happened back in two thousand, I think two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. And, um, it's just been settled now, so all particulars will be made available publicly and, uh, because it was a settlement, so it was a settlement that was agreed upon by both parties, and that was the award, and we just got the award of forty-five thousand dollars. Originally, the lawsuit was for a lot more, in the hundreds of thousands, but, uh, it was settled out to, we gave them lawyers the right to go with sixty thousand and they came back with forty-five dollars, so that's a savings that we're ready to get to, so. But all these particulars will be made public. Any comments from the trustee? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the special meeting. Move by trustee, uh, blue time, second by trustee Carter. Matter of question, follow through.
Trustee Brewer?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Brandon?
Yes.
Trustee Page?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Uh, two minutes, I think that's all we need to start the, uh, committee meeting and, uh, let's move the table right in front. We're gonna, if it's okay with everyone, we're gonna stay up here rather than trying to move tables back and move them in, so the board can stay right here even though it's a committee meeting and the presenters can, we can put the table straight across to make a face to the, uh, the board. They can go from right there. Okay, we can, uh, go into our, uh, maybe the whole meeting. Um, matter of question, follow through.
Trustee Brewer?
Here.
Trustee Carter?
Here.
Trustee Brandon?
Here.
Trustee Page?
Here.
Trustee Todd?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Okay, um, first item is an item, is ordinance adopting recommending regulations governing the flood plan in accordance with the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. Uh, this will be explained to us by, uh, Mr. Joseph Blue White.
Thank you, Mr. White. Okay, um, I should have received a copy of the ordinance in the box on Friday. Basically, what this is, is FEMA completed a flood insurance study and flood insurance rate maps, which will become effective on February fifteenth of twenty nineteen. In order for the village residents to maintain their flood insurance, the village has to, of course, participate and adopt the ordinance that's before you. What this is, is, um, basically the requirements to approve enforcement for developing flood plank areas within the village. FEMA did, uh, we did sit down with FEMA earlier this year and we had a discussion with them with respect to the flood maps that they've done, um, and there was really no major changes from the previous, um, previous evaluation that they did. So, um, the board is, it's recommended that the board approve the ordinance and adopts the, uh, slum water management for the village. It's pretty straightforward. Last time it was done was actually quite some time ago.
Any questions from the board?
Can we get a copy of the previous, um, set, flood plain insurance? Do we have a copy of that?
I do not.
Uh, it's impossible we can get a copy?
Um, the flood maps are not available in hard copy by FEMA anymore. They are available online. Um, if you wanted to hold those up, you can go to FEMA's website to pull up their latest flood maps and the most current ones. But they, they are not providing the village with any paper copies of those flood maps, so the village does not have copies of those. I can give you a copy of the, or the link for the site if you'd like, trustee, and, um, you'd be, you can peruse those as, as you feel.
Okay, do we have any, uh, a copy of all the measurements or something that, that they're used to determine if, uh, you know, what has to be, um, how much it costs? You know, there has to be some kind of measures, flooding measurements in the area.
Well, FEMA determines what is and what is not in a flood bay or flood zone, and they actually assign flood zones based on, uh, probability of flooding each year, whether it's a hundred-year or five-hundred-year flood plain. Those designations are made by FEMA, um, and those are available on maps.
Okay, so we don't know Saw Village has that, any issue with flood plains? Didn't, don't like, I think we get a...
The, when my discussions with the FEMA representative, you know, he didn't really say that we had a really big issue with flood, uh, flood zones and flood plains. There are some concerns with respect to Lincoln Meadows because that area was developed and they have not, I mean, still have not updated the flood maps for that area. Uh, but they can request anyone that has flood insurance, get what's called a flood map determination through FEMA, and all they have to do is fill out a form, obtain a topographical survey of their property, and FEMA will actually make a determination if it's required that they are, you know, in a flood zone or that they need to have flood insurance or not.
So that information is going to be made available to residents of Lincoln Meadows?
Um, I believe they're, they're aware that if they, if they have a mortgage on their home, they also would have to have flood insurance if they're in a flood zone that requires it.
I mean, to be on the six sack, we just watch you move them or something, say, this is something you might want to do?
I think that, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't impact all the residents, there's just a small portion that are on the north end of Lincoln Meadows that are impacted by it. But again, you know, sending them the information, letting them know that, you know, they can request a flood determination, uh, in order to determine whether they're in a flood zone going forward, doing what's called a map, they can do that for individuals. They won't do it for the whole area, they'll do it for individual parcels of land.
Well, you know, I think it'd be a great idea if we were to do something like that for residents over in Lincoln Meadows, that would be great, uh, you know, to know and to do, that's something that should come from the administration, just to get them to head up, and then potentially might have a problem, or this is something you need to address, that's something we might want to do.
Um, Mr. Blue White, is this ordinance, is this an update from the one that was written in two thousand?
That's correct, so.
This is eighteen years?
Eighteen years ago.
And the, what we had before is the showing what the new ordinance would look like?
That's correct, and that, that's correct, and the strikeouts that are indicated here were done by legal, so they've, they've gone through it and reviewed the recommendations that were provided by FEMA, and they've made their own recommendations to the board with respect to the changes.
What does OWR stand for?
Are you on the specific page?
It's scattered throughout. Every time I see a reference to IDNR, it's slash OWR, so light page two, page four, um, let's see what else it is. I think the first time it's on there is page two, though.
Yeah, it's one of the divisions of, one of my department, National Resources.
No, page seven.
Yeah, I see where it's, it's indicated on that.
And then just a general question, I don't know, Mayor, Clerk, who can answer this, but since we voted to DNX our footprint into Will County, do we need to continue to keep saying Will County in all these ordinances and resolutions?
Your line, I have a line, so it couldn't be...
Trustee Zupan, I did just quick Google on that. It stands for the Office of Water Resources.
Yeah, thank you, I had somebody else, uh, no, I'm...
He's a little faster, sorry.
Yeah. So we don't get a copy of the ordinance?
Should, it should be...
Is it in our box?
All, the ordinances were put in all of the trustee's box, or it may have been in your folder, uh...
But it's, it's not flood plain, it's called, oh, well, yeah.
So can we just get a... This is...
Um, having to put on the next agenda that goes on, hopefully, but I think we have a copy of all this redaction taken out, we'll take copies for this. Thank you. Next item, I, uh, ordinance for the levy and assessment of the taxes for, of the taxes for two thousand and eighteen for the Village of Saw Village, Cook and Will, I'm sorry, yeah, Cook and Will County. Um, as you know, Saw Village is not a home rule community, and it's limited to property tax increase of the consumer price index of two point one and no more than five percent without having a truth in taxation public hearing. The property tax levy that we have before us will decrease the property, homeowners' property taxes in the village by about twenty-two percent. We are better funding the police and fire pension fund. These two funds have gone with our sizable increases in the levy for many years. For the last two years, we have supplemented funding to the two pensions from operational budgets. This is our obligation, that's so strong that we live up to our commitments. The average increase, I'm sorry, decrease, as I stated before, was twenty-one percent. I have a few communities here, a few areas here that I got numbers of how much you would save in next year on your taxes. Um, not even specific order, Lincoln Meadows will save around four hundred and ninety-seven dollars per household. Um, Deer Creek, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Carolina Estates, a hundred and twenty-six dollars. Plum Creek, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. Indian Hills, eighty-two dollars. St. James Estates, a hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Now, you probably asked me where these places are located. And Southdale and Bel Air, Southdale is seventy-four dollars, and Bel Air is sixty-six dollars. So the minimum, wherever you live, would be at least sixty-six dollars in savings of your property taxes in the next upcoming year. The way the taxes are, were itemized, the levy was itemized, is a breakdown, everyone, everyone have a copy of the breakdowns for the fiscal year of two thousand and eighteen? Everyone have a copy of that? And you can see that from last year to the year this year, we're saving seven hundred and thirty thousand in your taxes, we reduced seven hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars, or twenty-one point eight percent.
You said property taxes, you reduced what?
For the whole village, property taxes were reduced by seven hundred and thirty thousand, a hundred and twenty-three dollars. And you do have a breakdown in front of you, uh, stating, um, the, the changes. We are going to add a little more to the police pension and the fire pension. That had an increase, but they've been on the front for years. Last year and year before last, I asked, asked money actually put it to the police and fire pension from the budget. Uh, but this year, uh, I have other things that I've got to bring to the board to try to, but I don't want to raise taxes right now, we don't need to. And in order for us to raise taxes, something that's not in here, we have to have a referendum. So, any questions?
So the only place that we can find police officers within this particular listing is under corporate, is that true?
Police officers, you mean, as far as levy, this is a levy.
Yeah.
This is for levy. I mean, if you put a referendum into levy, but there's nothing on here that says anything, that's corporate, it's not the police officer.
Okay, so there's one way that we could...
A levy, you can if you want to have a, yes, if you want to put it on the, uh...
No, I'm saying without the referendum. I'm saying live within, within this.
I'm, I'm looking at...
Instead of, instead of reducing by twenty-two percent, say, reduce ten percent instead, and use that other ten percent somewhere in here to increase the police budget, something like that.
Okay, I'm looking at another way to increase the police officers, and at this particular point in time, I'm not looking to tax the residents to do that.
Right, I understand.
So I have something that I'm going to bring to the board, um, for police hiring, and I'm looking to do that, but I'm not looking to, to do it with raising tax.
So if I just may add, Mayor, we are limited by the four point nine percent total cap, so the only other place to take it would be to lower our pension contributions there. And one thing to note is that the fire, um, pension fund is currently funded at the four percent level, and the police pension fund is funded right now at the thirty-five percent level. By law, we have until the year twenty forty to be at the ninety percent funded level, and that's twenty-two years away approximately. Um, we do recognize that these increases are not going to get us to close the gap, but they are a step in the right direction, and that's what we're trying to map out here, steps in the right direction. And there's no doubt that all of us inherited this problem, however, we do have the duty to be able to start taking the step in the right direction and, and close it. So we could do that, but we have to take away from the pension funds, and that seems to be an area where we have not honored our commitments in the past.
Question, uh, based what you just said, uh, I think last year we contributed, I think, fifty thousand in the fire, fire fund.
We did, we absolutely did.
I'm looking to do that in addition to this as well this year, or do you...
It is in the budget to do both, so it is, right now, it's in our appropriation budget to be able to continue the fifty thousand into the fire pension and fifty thousand into the police pension.
Okay, so just to confirm, you're just saying this is not the place to be finding additional police staff, okay?
I don't, I don't want to use, at this particular point in time, taxes, uh, for that reason, like I said, if that, if it comes to that, that we will have to have a referendum, we'll have to go before, on the ballot, to levy for X amount of free taxes.
Okay, 'cause I mean, we had the choice where we could leave taxes, the levy flat, right, versus decreased by twenty-two percent.
Um, if I may, that it was not one of our choices?
Okay, that's all. And that's where I think I was going, was because I think corporate was already at the two point one percent, and that's our max, so I didn't think we could go any higher than that, so, okay, we heard it.
Any other questions? In regards to the levy? That will be put on the, um, agenda next week as we go along. Um, next item, a resolution requesting Cook County Clerk to apply for an elevated loss and cost factor to the two thousand and eighteen levy for the Village of Saw Village, Will and Cook. In regards to that, every year, even though we levy for X amount of money, they cut us by ten percent or sometimes even more, that they give us what we ask for minus ten percent, so we have to, um, request, we put a resolution, a request to get our ten percent back. Um, and every year we do that, so it's no different than what we've been doing. We're gonna, um, put a resolution into the Cook County to ask for our, for them to give us our ten percent, in other words, give us all of our levy that we asked for. Because they usually cut most, a lot of places down, but if you don't ask, you don't get, so this is something that, uh, we're going to pursue, we do it every year to recoup... pardon? Oh, we did it every year, okay? To pursue the ten percent, uh, cost, uh, that we normally wouldn't have took time to go at your ten percent, so we're going to follow a resolution to, uh, to get our ten percent loss back. Any questions on that?
So I was looking for exhibit A, I didn't see one.
Trustee, that was, I put that on your, up on the diocese, I think. We just finished...
Oh, it was up, it was up here. Did you, you got it?
Yeah, I did.
No, it should be a, yeah. If you look at it from right to left, on the very bottom, you'll see the percentage of collections and how it's gone down historically from ninety-eight percent down to ninety, um, versus the extension, and then versus the levy, it went from ninety-six down to seventy-seven, seventy-eight percent. And Cook County did apply the ten percent that the village requested on the last, last year's levy, so the twenty, uh, seventeen payable eighteen, uh, that ten percent was included on the extension.
Any other questions?
Just if, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just to let the board know, um, there's about eighteen pages on the Cook County's website of delinquent property taxes, just for twenty seventeen alone. Um, some of those are, um, obviously years that are early, but it's about eighteen percent of the total, um, parcels that are delinquent in their taxes, so almost one out of five parcel in the village.
Okay, item number four, resolution of the Village of Saw Village, Cook and Will County... pardon? I'm sorry, yes, number three, yes. Resolution of the Village of Saw Village, Cook and Will County authorizing a renewal of the Class A property tax incentive for a property commonly known that's two seventeen fifty-one jet reservation drive and depend numbers is number thirty-two, twenty-six, two oh one dash zero, one one dash zero zero zero, and thirty-two dash twenty-six, one oh three dash zero zero one dash zero 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 zero. Basically, what we're doing is, um, renewing their Class A tax incentive, and, um, you have, please, um, step in here and let me know, is this all of the area over there in tip three or just over there?
Uh, this, this is the, um, original parcel that was built out in the Justice Center. DP Partners built that as a spec property back in like two thousand and four. WSI Warehouse Specialties was the tenant in that building. Um, they've requested the extension of that. They came in about two thousand and eight, um, in that timeframe, so they're asking for the renewal of the, um, Class A. Cook County does permit that, um, it's commoned throughout Cook County. Um, we've gone through, um, before how a Class A works, but essentially for the first ten years, it's reduced from twenty-five percent of assessed value down to ten percent, and then for the next two years, it increases until the thirteenth year, where you get a hundred percent of your assessment, it's back to twenty-five percent.
When is this particular Class A up, and what are we talking about now?
This particular one ends this year.
I hear.
This ends this year.
Okay, that's in August, nineteen, nineteen?
It expires, well, renewal period is, is in twenty eighteen. They still have two more years, but they can request a renewal in year ten, which is this year ten.
And is there an exhibit that's missing again?
The original, uh, resolution, um, is available. I do not have it in here because it wasn't, uh, submitted with the original resolution from legal, but I will give the board a copy of the original one from DP Partners from two thousand and four. thousand and four.
Do we have any idea how much money, I guess, the village has saved because we did the Class Eight for the last, what is it, ten years or thirteen years or something?
You said that the village saved?
Yeah, you know, not saved, but you know, the money's been taken and put into our tip. So, how much money has been, I guess, I'd be able to say saved.
Okay.
Well, not here in the full amount, does it reduce by ten percent?
It's actually, it's almost forty percent reduction in the taxes that they pay. But understand that the a hundred percent of the tax revenue goes to the village right now. So, whereas the village would only collect about forty percent of that, we're getting a hundred percent of forty percent.
A hundred percent of forty percent.
A hundred percent of forty percent, yeah. And that goes into the Tiff District, Tiff District.
Uh, these particular parcels and land, what specific buildings are they?
This is the Warehouse Specialties, it's the one that's on Markham and Strive.
Warehouse Specialties.
If you go all the way down, Markham and Strive, it's the last building on your left, about the size of the minutes.
And the other one?
It's two parcels, but it's the same building.
Now, part of my question is, I guess, we're saving forty percent because we got the Class Eight for these two parcels of land, okay? Now, when we get rid, uh, can you tell me, it's in Tiff Three, right? So, they get forty percent reduction, it goes to Tiff Three, okay? So, that means that the money's going to be put back in the tip to make whatever improvements that they want to make, right? Okay, however, when we come out to the, they get a tax break, that's one thing, for business, but then, this is my thought, you have residents out here who have had properties for years, we're not getting a forty percent reduction in anything, and then we come back in Tiff Three, we just had to refund Tiff Three for some, to get additional money to make whatever improvements in there. They're getting all this refunding and everything to make improvements to a business, but you talk about the residents, and we're not getting anything. And, you found money, am I missing something or whatever?
I'm not sure I understand if there's a question in there.
But the question is that all the, by giving them another Class Eight renewal, they get the reduction, that's a business, but I'm thinking about the residents, what they get.
Well, I mean, when you think of it from that perspective, I guess the business wouldn't be here if they, if not for the Class Eight, and that's why that incentive is in place. So, if that business was not here but for that incentive, the two hundred jobs that that building provides wouldn't be in Saw Village, you know? So, that's two hundred people coming here into the village to work or that work here from the village, or those opportunities are available for the village residents for work, those wouldn't be here. So, there's a benefit of that. There's a benefit that Warehouse Specialties is actually paying the property taxes to help pay for the bonds that were used for the infrastructure improvements that were originally done in two thousand and two, and now we're refunding those bonds now with the same expiration date, and the village is going to save some money by doing that. So, that's a benefit to the village residents because they're not having to pay those bonds. So, if the village didn't renew the Class Eight, for instance, and they said, you know what, we're not going to pay one point eight million dollars in property taxes when we can go to Indiana. So, I mean, there's a benefit to do the Class Eight for the, for the business, because you're going to retain the business here in the village as opposed to having them move elsewhere, and then having a vacant building where the vacancy rate, or vacant tax rate would go down to ten percent anyway.
So, you said, two hundred people about, you can just give me...
Approximately, two hundred people.
Two hundred people?
That there's actually two separate businesses there.
Okay, so, we're not talking about the one that you were going to have, we don't know how many people does in, that's in the Warehouse Specialties, and we don't have how many people?
How many people actually work there?
Yeah.
Between both buildings, there's about two hundred and thirty-five.
So, that's all the...
Right. They go between both buildings. They actually have a building to the west and a building that they have their warehouse in on the east, which is particularly building for the place. The Pratt Industries is also in there as well, and they have about thirty-five employees.
Thirty-five?
Right.
Okay, so you mentioned that, that we wouldn't have the property taxes be paid, the one point eight million would be paid if the warehouse wasn't there, okay? But, just think about it this way, too, this speculation since we're talking, we're not getting anything now, everything we get goes back into the, into the tip, it doesn't benefit the residents any. All that money goes back into the tip, so where is it, the benefits to the residents?
The, excuse me, the benefits for the businesses that are in the different tips and industrial parks, we still sell water to everybody that's in Saw Village, so you get water bills, that's, there is no break on that, whatever, if they're charged, they're charged. And as far as jobs are concerned, I mean, I'm not saying that fifty percent of the jobs there in that tip come from Saw Village, but there's a five point, a lot of people that are employed within that industrial park that live in Saw Village, and that train is off of us, that come out and patronize some of our industries and retail that we have in Saw Village. So, just like this new thing that's going to be coming with the trucks, it must be money being coming out, we get a lot of money by the money because it is our motor fuel tax, so therefore, our intake in motor fuel tax will increase. As was just said, though, if we don't, if we don't give them an incentive, less than a mile away is Indiana. Believe me, we've lost a couple of businesses already in Indiana in the last four or five years because there was no incentive, and we had nothing to give them to keep them here, oh Lord. It's hard to keep businesses, little Lord, especially for us, because we're right next to Indiana, and they give them a far, to come and do business there. For them to, for them to even be here, it's a testament that, you know, they're going to ask for something, their business may want, and they're going to ask for something, and if you don't want to give it to them, they'll go somewhere else and give it, but they're going to open up, and they're going to have businesses wherever they be, may not be here in Saw Village, may not be, oh Lord. But these more time, million dollar and billion dollar corporations are going to still open up. I mean, you look at Amazon, Amazon, who knows how many, they got a thousand or twelve hundred per shift. I'm glad, I know Mochinas happy that they're there, they gave them the farm, but they didn't get anything, it was all tip. But they still got jobs, and they got commerce, and they were able to build things because they got those many people going in and out of the area, trading. So, the benefits you may not see right there front, but it does benefit the village, because if we didn't have those industries, who else would help pay for all the public services that we have? Who else would pay for all the different things that we have to be, that have to be paid for through the village if we wasn't for a lot of industry and a lot of retail? So, it's not that we're not doing, or we, it's not that, it's not helping or benefiting the residents, yes, it is. As I just stated, the taxes are going to be lowered, they're going to be lowered the next, the company, uh, next fiscal year. I'm not looking to raise more taxes right now, I, I, I'm looking to work within and to hire without raising taxes. That's the mandate I have in front of me right now. But to say that the residents aren't benefiting from the businesses that are coming in tip, only way you're going to get businesses to come out into South Suburbs is through tip. You got to have something, because the county will give you a little something, but they won't, nobody can compete with Indiana, where Indiana want to put its foot forward and say, hey, you come over here, we give you a day and a month.
And if I could, Mr. Mayor, just to, you touched on a very good point, that Lake County, Indiana, for their commercial and industrial property, you pay three percent, okay? So, three percent of your value. Over here in Saw Village, the rate's sixteen percent. So, it's a big difference, and it's very hard to be on a competitive field without that Class Eight or without the six B.
I understand, and I appreciate the answer, but still, in fact, the facts are, you have a forty percent reduction in Tiff Three, the area that we're going to go, want to renew license, I'm just questioning it, I didn't say I'm for it or against it, I'm just putting it out there. You get a forty percent reduction, that means that's forty percent less money you're going to get, and at that point, and we already said that we got the problems with our property taxes, you get a forty percent reduction in businesses, and then you have a business, uh, uh, tax areas out there that we have, we know we have to pay taxes for, you might want to, I don't know how much a reduction it can be, but we might want to look at how much is we're paying for that big reduction, forty percent is a lot of money. So, I don't know if it's standard or whatever, but it seems like to me, if they get a forty percent reduction that, and like the mayor said, was, he didn't know that we're not having an increase in our taxes either, so you might want to emphasize that to residents, you know, because businesses give you a reduction, we should give them too, that's the afterthought.
Any other questions in regards to item number four? Okay, um, I'm at the... All right, the next item, public comment, all questions and comments shall be directed to the mayor, each speaker may comment on any matter pertaining to the village of Saw Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes, may not engage in debate or counter discussion, and I will answer all questions and comments after all questions have been addressed. Come up, state your name, put a rest.
Linda Washington, on behalf of citizens who have voted in dialogue, and those residents that were not able to participate during the march, and those that were, we have excitement protests going on tonight in case you even wondered what those signs over there are, they say what we feel, police and fire, as, as, uh, you need to be more transparent, more police officers, if you take the time to read what the residents care about, this is what we care about. All of those signs over there, what they say, what police officers, we have signs that we put up, and that we put, we put these all around the village to let residents know that do, we do care what they say. So, when you see these signs, and you were elected by the residents to have their concerns in mind, this is what the residents care about, some of you walked out and looked at them, and maybe some of you all don't know, so I wanted to get up to explain, on behalf of the residents, these are the things we want to see done with our tax dollars. Also, I'm glad the mayor said, and he's trying to figure out a way to get more police officers, because we definitely do need more police officers, with Christmas coming up, we've been telling residents that when they do buy big gifts like televisions and games for their children, don't put those boxes in the garbage can, or put up their black garbage bags and tie them up around Christmas time, because people who are really looking at their garbage just to see what you bought, and they're breaking your house, trying to steal what you have. Also, people know that you're shopping, I had several residents, a few residents that got in contact, uh, some of the members on our committee, and they left just to go to the store, and when they got back, their homes were already broken in too. Some of them had a window broken out, some had things actually taped, and rent money, jewelry on their dresses. This is a hot season for break-ins and for robbery and for vandalism, people looking for any kind of, that don't have anything, so get more police officers and adhere to some of the things that the resident want, we really appreciate you all taking the residents into consideration. Thank you.
Judy Cast here. My name is Judy Cast, spell my last name, C-A-S-T, there's no S's, nothing else added on. Everybody here that knows me knows that there are times when I have not gotten up here, and I don't get up here if I can't back up what I say. And I have used that as my personal issues with getting up here. Therefore, tonight, I want to read a letter to you that I received from the state's attorney's office. This is from Human Resources, sent Thursday, November twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen, at two thirty-four P.M., to Stephen Silverman. Subject FOIA request for review, twenty eighteen PAC five-five one oh three, registered, Mrs. Judith Cast. Deputy Silverman, this letter is in response to Judy Cast FOIA PAC review, twenty eighteen five-five one oh three. Deputy Silverman, the false accusation by Mrs. Casts in her September twenty-eight, twenty eighteen email to the PAC is extremely concerning. Mrs. Cast is implying that the former treasurer, now interim finance director of the village, is not operating at a professional level of financial code of conduct, and utilize illegal opinion to manage and oversee the finances of the village. This is simply not true. Mrs. Cast's false accusation that the village treasurer stated at a recent village board meetings that she has a legal opinion concerning operational transfer is simply false. The village is unclear how an assumption can be classified as a FOIA request. Unfortunately, it is very hard to defend against a negative because no such documents exist. In regards to Mrs. Cast's FOIA request, the response was based on no such documents exist, and the FOIA was verified with the former village treasurer who clearly stated that, and I quote, "She did not communicate that she has a legal opinion for operational transfers." This is a false accusation toward a professional with thirty years of financial background with the University of Chicago master's degree in finance. In closing, please know that Saw Village treats all of our citizens and our FOIA requesters with professional and respect. Professionalism and respect, did you say time? Okay, I will have copies of these for anybody that wishes to see them, I also have a response, I spent forty-five minutes on the phone with Mr. Silverman, and I did attach, send him a response to the letter, and I did send him copies of videotapes that prove I'm not the liar, she is. Padlock, last week I got up here regarding a vicious dog that has had numerous tickets issued to the family. You made a statement, you didn't know how anybody could know that that family's been issued over four thousand dollars worth of tickets. I'm here to tell you that I know how much they were issued because I showed up in court, they did not. When you don't show up for a court date, the ticket original amount doubles, then it will triple, because they don't care and they don't show up. That's an issue. I don't know where it's going to stand, I don't know what the outcome is going to be, but that vicious dog is still there. There's also a house on two twenty-first, and as the mayor, I would think that if you're looking around for economic development and you're watching the residents closely, if you drive down two twenty-first street, on the south side of the street, you're going to see a house that they are running a business from that house with cars lined up on jacks, which is dangerous for children that get off the buses and go to those neighbors. There is a blue tarp, so you can't miss that house. I understand they received numerous tickets, nothing's been done, they leave that blue tarp up there, it is an eyesore, it's a detriment to the neighborhood, and it's a danger to It's a detriment to the neighborhood and it's a danger to see those ha, those cars up on cinder blocks where they're running a business out of that residence. I think somebody should take note.
Good evening, everyone. Thank, first of all, I wanna thank, uh, the mayor and the board for, um, giving us an information of the profit tax decreases that we could be expecting. That's, um, fabulous news for the residents. I just hope that the decrease in taxes does not decrease the services that we're going to be receiving because we still have a lot of services that we're not receiving, such as the fire hydrants. We need to find out, we need to get a more current update on where we are fixing the fire hydrants. I think we really need to address that. And also, I'm glad to hear that, uh, the mayor's looking into ways to increase the police department because as we've all been saying, this is all important to us. Living in the hotbed that I live in, police officers are really important to me. So I'm glad to see that that's happening. Um, I noticed, uh, the clock here, I think, is a little long. Uh, just since they weren't saving this time?
About an hour.
Yeah, about an hour. So we could fix that because we looked up while you were in executive session and thought, wow, you guys been back there a long time. But anyway, that's just a little housekeeping minute. And finally, the website. Um, I see that you still don't have any financial information. Well, ordinance is up since two thousand seventeen. Uh, I don't know how police department or residents know what's the most current ordinances if it's not on website and there's no recodification that's done. We have a good police chief who's working with a severely old code book, so he doesn't even have, you know, experience dealing with what codes are and are not in place. So I'm not sure what he's using as a reference when he, when he's being asked a question about whether or not a particular instance that's happening is against code or within our code. So it's just a thought, and again, I'd be more than happy to assist anybody if they want me to work it out and getting that code book recodified. It's a project. It's a big project. But, uh, money is in the budget several times to get it done and it really should be a priority for us. Again, thank you for the information that we've heard tonight. Good evening.
Hi, DeParker. I went to South Plaza the other night. Uh, not night, it was in the afternoon. It had gotten dark a little early. I couldn't believe how dark it was over there. It is scary. I remember when you were a trustee, that was your pet project. You wanted to improve it, make it beautiful. Uh, what happened? Something needs to be done about it.
Hey, um, as far as the letter from the state's attorney or attorney general, I don't know if the state's attorney or attorney general, but, um, hopefully I can see what that is all about, the second part. Um, as far as the vicious dog that is concerned, I'm sure the chief is knows all about it and, um, you know, I'm, I can't speak for him, but I'm sure I will tell him tomorrow because I have a meeting in the morning at seven o'clock with our police department, so I will have a chance to discuss that. Um, the business or the house that I've called, uh, and has a code violation, I will pass that on to our old, um, person, um, twenty-twenty-first street. The house with the blue top, uh, I guess I can, she can find it and then I will let her know about that tomorrow. Um, the website is going to be something that's being worked on as we speak. We're trying to finalize the legality's part of it and get everything into place so we can start doing it, everything is taken care of. And also, as informed, the community code has the, uh, code. So they're working under the community code that was voted in, um, has the code and they're going to be, um, defended. We're gonna be updating it pretty soon and it'll, it'll be out on the, uh, website. Also, on the, um, I don't know if they'll put it in print. I think the first one, they may put a few in print because I know it's gonna cost a lot of money. And then the last thing is the, um, plaza that's over there, that yes, I did talk about it. I, when they got a, um, guess you call it, they got a class eight or they had to deferment to taxes and that was one of the things I wanted them to, uh, take care of before they did it. But right now, I have to talk to them about it. Well, the other thing that, but I'm trying to close them down because I don't like to close businesses down. I've asked them, can we issue tickets? They do have tickets because of that reason. That was one of the stipulations that I had wanted them to take care of before they got this tax deferred, but it was passed without that being done, like a lot of other things were passed without it being done. But now, they're my problem, so I'm gonna deal with it. I'm going to, uh, talk to the owner again, which we've already talked to, told him about. Not just that, the parking lot also needs to be taken care of. And there's other things that are going on in that plaza because they seem to think that they have a, um, used car lot there. So those, they have been ticketed for those, for those reasons, so. It's not, it's not going unnoticed, but it's just, it is there, just like anybody else. They figured that you playing with them until somebody takes you to court and tries to shut you down against the national, they'll try to listen, so. That being said, um, I may be counting through the trustees. I'll start with trustee Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just wanna reiterate, um, trustee Zupan brought up about the ordinances that says Will County. And we no longer have a thumbprint in Will County. Is that correct?
Um, until we get everything ratified, we can be voting on it. They have to vote. As a matter of fact, there's another part here that you're gonna be voting on pretty soon and that's the, um, parcel itself because we're gonna have to have a new map drawn up, so we gotta look at that. And we're gonna have that presented to the board and that's when they have to be voting on. So it's not just a cut and dry process. It's a two-part, three-part process to deannex from a county. Now, one thing was just, you know, all in Cook County, but now you deannexing from Cook County, I'm sorry, from Will County to Cook County, so. And we'll be getting the paperwork and, and you guys will be voting on it and you'll be looking at it and discussing it, so. Right now, we voted on to deannex South Village from that, so now we have to get a new map that has drawn up, has to be, um, go to both places. Now it's gonna go to Will County and to Cook County and we'll look at that, so.
So once that happens and once we finally do that, then our ordinances, because I'm getting ready, I'm getting, I'm getting ready to have an ordinance re-run and I wanna make sure.
When you're gonna get that, is it?
Okay. Oh, and that's it, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's it? Okay, trustee Brooke?
Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, I wanna congratulate those, um, employees of Public Works that did an outstanding job this weekend. I don't know if you guys know, we had a huge water main break on two-hundred-twenty-first street. The, uh, water main break was in three places at this time and the same area about two months ago was broken two places. So, uh, you got to give it to Public Works guy. They were really out there. They really did it for us. Uh, with that being said, I will also, uh, wanna, uh, made it, put on record that, uh, I'm gonna talk to Kevin Weller, the Public Works, and them to get information so we can sort of ease into the project on, uh, get some infrastructure repair replacement. You guys have to remember, this is not for the mission of water. This is for the repair and replacements of infrastructure. This infrastructure is sixty years old and we all know things we used to do when we was sixty, we cannot do anymore. And it has to be repaired and replaced at certain, at certain intervals. So with that being said, we need to take a look at what infrastructure improvement we need to make and how much it's gonna cost. That's gonna take a lot of, um, information from Kevin, uh, from Mr. Weller, and also a lot from, uh, Roxton Engineering. But, uh, we're setting up a task to look at what we need in order to make improvement for the village of South Village because we can't keep going on with this. It costs more to maintain, uh, this structure as it is than just going to fix it. We can look, we can look at the other options later, but right now, to pay all that on just like two-hundred-twenty-first street, there, uh, if I'm not mistaken, um, Roxton Engineering came in with a proposal to resurface two-hundred-twenty-first street. What's the sense of refer, resurfacing, uh, two-hundred-twenty-first street when you haven't addressed the underlying problems? So those are items, those are things that we need to start looking at now. Well, we should have been looking at it quite a long time ago. But it doesn't make any sense to spend that two-hundred thousand dollars on two-hundred-twenty-first street when you have a great big water main break. So those are the things that we are looking at for the infrastructure, uh, committee and also how much it's gonna cost. So hopefully, we'll get the information, we can start, you know, give you guys some feedback on what, you know, we're looking at. So that's the end of my report.
Uh, trustee Brooke?
Yes. Yes.
You made a comment in regards to you can't do what you did at sixty and you can do it now. I don't know.
I said, I said, we all know that the things we did when we sixty, we can't do.
We all may not be sixty yet.
Everything you guys know. Y'all know good and well, you can't do everything you was doing when you was at sixty.
Some of us have not made it to sixty yet.
Yeah, but those who have made it, you'll know in a few minutes.
Trust, trustee. Trustee, uh, Todd. Trustee Zupan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let, uh, everybody know that I did have a meeting with the police chief last week and he and I are talking about how to implement community-wide forums going forward on a monthly basis. He's very anxious to get those started, uh, as soon as, maybe January, uh, on a, either monthly or potentially twice a month basis, depending on what the community turnout is, so. Uh, we're, we're talking about how best to do that and have that happen here, um, with, you know, either himself or one of the officers and, and how to best address that and what the topics of, uh, conversation would be, have an agenda to put out there and how to handle that, so. Uh, really excited. He's really excited to get that going, uh, and, and so it's good to see that he's wanting to get that community engagement going, uh, quickly. So I just wanted to make sure everybody heard that. And, uh, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Lenny?
Yes.
Trustee, uh, Grant?
I have no comment.
Okay, um, I do have one thing I forgot to mention. I think it's Wednesday. They have the comprehensive plan to be here, uh, at seven o'clock. All those that came before come out and this, I think, will be one of the last ones that we're gonna have that'll be involved, maybe gather a lot of information over the past few months. So they're gonna have another one tomorrow here at seven o'clock. Uh, bring, bring your ideas and come out and listen to what they may have already some things. I'm not sure, but you can come out and listen to see where where they, what information they gather. Also, I was just told that the consolidated election, um, information, there's a sheet that's on the back table back there and gives you the date. This is for the, um, school district, because I was like... Okay, okay. Okay, so then this will be for the trustees and for the school district, and for the library district. So this information is on the, um, table at the back. You pick it up on the way out for those that are, that'll be candidates. With that being said, I would accept the motion to adjourn. The move by trustee Brooke, second by trustee Connor, all in favor? Motion carried. Thank you.